Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us all mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. Morning, everyone.
I would move to approve the minutes of November 7th.
Second.
Discussion? Roll?
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick.
Yes. Okay, next up. Do we have anybody who has any public comment on any pending resolutions? If not, we will move on to resolutions. First up, we have Andy Conrad, our county engineer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just have one resolution for your consideration is authorizing our office to advertise for bids for the 2024 Frontfield Road Improvement Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll?
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Enjoy your event today. Next up, we have Jeremy Cinco, our sanitary engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Four resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing an agreement between Medina County and Census USA Incorporated. The second is authorizing the sanitary engineer to request statement of qualifications for professional design services for the Garmon Road well site development project. The third is authorizing the sanitary engineer to request statement of qualifications for professional design services for the Greenwich Road and Lake Roads Water Main Extension Project. And the fourth is accepting and awarding a bid for the Fen and Marx Road Water Main Replacement Project.
Move to approve the four resolutions.
Second.
Discussion? Roll?
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick.
Yes.
Thank you.
To Jeremy. Next up, we have Steve Sikora from Job and Family Services.
Morning.
Morning. Just one for your consideration this morning. It's a resolution authorizing an agreement between the Department of Job and Family Services and the Ohio Attorney General. This is for a national web check program, so it's a background check for foster parents that we might recruit.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll?
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick.
Yes. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, commissioners.
Next up, we have Denise Testa from Planning Services.
Good morning.
Morning.
Just one resolution for your consideration, accepting and awarding a bid for the Village of Lodi Critical Infrastructure Community Park Bridge Replacement Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll?
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick.
Yes.
Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Holly Mura, our human resources director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On our personal changes resolution today, we have two new hires at County Home, six rate increases, three in sanitary, two in maintenance, and one in transit, one promotion in sanitary, and one leave extended in sanitary.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll?
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Next up, we have Brett Thomas, our finance director.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I have nine resolutions for your consideration today. They're all pretty quick ones, though. First one is increasing appropriations for our budget. Our second resolution is transferring appropriations between line items. Our third resolution is expenditure adjustments for various funds. Fourth resolution is cash transfers. Our fifth resolution is print shop revenue. Sixth resolution is for the gasoline rotary fund. Our seventh resolution is approval of the agreement for intake and referral services for Family First Council and Catholic Charities. Our eighth resolution is expenses of county officials. We have nothing that's out of state this week. And then finally, our ninth resolution is our weekly bills in the amount of $1,510,914.60. And as always, copies are kept in the auditor's office for perusal.
I move to approve the nine resolutions.
Second.
Discussion? Roll?
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick.
Yes. Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Chris Jacob, our county administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just one resolution for you this morning. This resolution establishes the initial employee healthcare plan, measurement stability, and administrative periods. This is pursuant to the requirements of the Affordable Care Act. Also, as you, just for informational purposes, the annual plan enrollment process has begun for the employees who are part of our health plan. Those sessions are being conducted over the next two weeks.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll?
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick.
Yes. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, our department reports today. We have Greg Brown from County Home.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
So, starting with census, we are currently at 39. We have a new resident coming in on the 20th of this month. Our adult daycare, we currently have one attending. One of the things that's about the home is sometimes you always think that it's just long-term care. Well, you know, our goal is to keep people independent and successful. And Amy is always working with many of the other agencies to make sure, you know, strengths are maximized, support goals to be independent. And with that in mind, we most recently had one of our residents depart on Saturday just for that reason. He was, he went off to, you know, we were there to help him, and now he's off doing, doing better in the community. And that's a, that's a great goal to have. I just got back one Friday from the Ohio County Home Association. The conference was down in Salt Fork, a lot of topics. The biggest takeaway, though, having talked to five of the eight, leaving one, so four of the other non-certified homes, is that Medina County is still definitely relevant and that our census is keeping in, right in line with everyone else's. Some of the donations that we've had come in, clothes, cards, holiday cards for the residents to give out to their families. We had, our current hairstylist is out on maternity absence. And so, we had Amy coordinated for us and Captain Tracy Nappin, the Salvation Army captain, came in. She's a certified hairstylist, and she came in and cut hair for the residents. Some of the renovations that were, we've had done, our root cellar, maintenance shop, and equipment shed have tin roofs, and it's been many years. So, I had five-star painting come in and reseal those, nice silver-looking again. Also, the restoration on the men's 1A restroom, long overdue, finally started. Maintenance jumped in there, you know, guns are blazing, and the, the current urinal is so cemented to that floor that it's gonna take a jackhammer to get it out, and so I had to go to a vendor for that one. Maintenance has been around cleaning gutters. We had some yellow jackets that decided to make homes inside the building cement and concrete and brick. And so, Apollo had, pest control had to work with maintenance to get up on their new lift to go up there and actually exterminate those. Also, there was a vintage antenna from I don't know what era that they finally took down from the top for me as well. And then they also, big thing is, three years' worth of collecting stuff in my barn, they finally got that taken care of, so it's all nice and clean in there. Some of the resident activities that have happened, Access the Arts, once again, is always one of our biggest sponsors. They've done bonfires, crafts. There was a musician that came in, played old-time country music. It was very interesting. They've done a Halloween party for us. The Health Department came this month and did flu shots and COVID shots for our staff and residents. Also, the clutter family, it's already that time, the 29th of this month, the Christmas party is already planned and in motion. Some of the residents, some of the other things that they do, they've gone bowling, they go to the rec center. The bookmobile comes religiously every Thursday for them to get their DVDs and books. And then, also, just as a note, that the, always on Veterans Day, they're out there bringing down the flag, changing it out for us, and making sure that their Old Glory's not tattered or faded. And that's all I have, pending your questions.
Great.
Thanks, Eric.
Great. What's the, what's the nature, the kind of indications you get at the, at the Ohio Conference in terms of, you know, the, the perspective on county homes and the association's perspective on things going forward?
So, the things that we talked about, staffing is still there. How to get the, you know, more residents in, we talked about, you know, what board and care is for each of the different ones, and based on, you know, your county, what that looked like. That was interesting. It's still eight non-certified homes left. All, I said, it was interesting to, to talk about, like, what they did for, like, food service, or, you know, what their rooms and what they're doing to try to accommodate other people coming in. Like I said, it was very, it was very eye-opening.
What's the number on certified?
Certified was at 12.
Okay. So, there aren't many of those either. I didn't, I figured there might be less of those.
And there's, there's more of those.
Great.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Next up, we have Philip Tetherington from Adam Board.
Good morning.
Morning.
First, I want to thank everybody. It's a good day today. The levy out, I mean, the support, the percentage that have passed. I want to thank those who supported that levy. It's extremely important. I want to thank the commissioners for their continued support as we move forward, as well as the Office for Older Adults and Job and Family Services without the team effort. I mean, that was a heavy lift anyway, so thank you all. All right, I'll be somewhat brief. I think it's brief, but I'll give you this somewhat. Thank you again for allowing me to prevent, present today. And I will present on, really, the focus areas on what the levy funding does and how it really helps us. So, first thing is, is the mental health and crisis supports. That's a big one, that levy funds are used. So, my report's gonna be for the quarter of July through September. And as you can imagine, we continue to receive a large number of outreach, even directly to our office, for people who need assistance, guidance, and we can help navigate them through the system. We continue to see that the level of need for permanent supportive housing through the Adam Board, it, it really is outpacing what we have. We have the ability, we have 44 units, and we have a waiting list for that. In addition, our Northland Two, we have 11 units there that are specifically for individuals who are chronically homeless, and we have a waitlist for that as well. So, that kind of ties into the importance of the emergency shelter. And we'll continue to work with MMHA and the group that is moving that forward. And, I mean, what, what also is something that we continue to feel is the, when we have individuals who need a higher level of care coming out of the state psychiatric hospital, or their, their need is so great that we want to keep them out of that, so we look for adult group homes. I mean, those are far and few between. We contract outside of the county. And a lot of times, the cost is $3,500 a month per individual, so that adds up as we go. So, let's see. In August, Alternative Paths opened up their Brunswick office, so they now have physical location in Lodi, Wadsworth, Medina, and Brunswick. So, that's another nice, it reduces transportation barriers and some of those other barriers to treatment. They're very successful in serving a, a good number of clients in Brunswick right now. So, through this quarter, our main agencies that we contract with, these are gonna be the numbers that are combined, Catholic Charities, Ohio Guidestone, and Alternative Paths. So, during this quarter, there were 5,814 total clients that were served. 90% of those were adults, 10% were youth. And then of those, approximately 43% of the adults are 2,139, and 125, or 25% youth, are receiving psychiatric services. So, that's that higher level of care and that need that they are getting. About 279 youth were diagnosed with serious emotional disturbance, once again, higher need. Our newly constructed Youth Resiliency and Counseling Center over there on Northland Drive, that continues to build up its, its base, and it treats individuals kind of more intensely for those who are suffering from youth. They incorporate family, and they're also working with other agencies as well throughout the community to use that space. Also, through levy, we're able to use levy funds to help support the 24/7 Crisis Behavioral Helpline. So, during this quarter, there were 887 calls or engagements through that hotline. 58 individuals verbalized suicidal thoughts. There were 43 active rescues. 75 referrals were made directly from law enforcement, so that's really key. And, and that's a, when we talk crisis around the state, that is something that really sticks out, that Medina County has that relationship with law enforcement, and they have the knowledge that they can reach out as opposed to automatically arresting the individual, throwing them in jail. And we all know that doesn't work either, so, so we're really happy with that. And then also, the Alternative Paths operates their loss. So, individuals who, the outcome of a suicide, they were dispatched four times, so during that quarter. Recovery supports is another area that we do fund, and Hope Recovery Communities are main. And their main hub is out of Medina, but they also have a hub in Brunswick, as well as Wadsworth. They are open 20, 365 days a year. I say that now because the holidays are obviously a very critical time, if you will, for individuals who are in recovery and need that assistance. They have a 24/7 Hope Link program where anybody can call 24 hours, seven days a week, and they can get linked up with a peer supporter, somebody who has lived experience, and they can help walk them through their journey. And that's critical, especially on the weekend, when sometimes our agencies aren't operating during the weekend. They can at least have somebody connect, get them through the weekend, then we can get them in through contracts, working with them into whatever level of care that they might need. There were 183 calls during that quarter through the Hope Link. There currently are 15 certified peer recovery supporters working at Hope Recovery Community and nine at Ohio Guidestone, so there's that connection that's there. Also, during July through September, Hope Recovery Community provided support to 134 inmates in the jail. And that's critical, make that connection inside the jail, transition them back into the community, and that, that will increase the success and reduce the recidivism. 95 individuals were linked to detox residential treatment or recovery housing during that quarter as well. And then finally, the levy also helps support in, in the recovery supports, medication-assisted treatment. And during this quarter, medication-assisted treatment can start in jail, or they also have the capacity to continue it in jail. So, just keep that continuity as they are in jail and transition out of jail. There were 90 individuals that received, per month, on average, received MAT through Ohio Guidestone and Alternative Paths. There are 12 women that are housed at our Discovery Recovery House, capacity's 12, and there's always a waitlist. And then with Adam Board's support, Kathy's house now has 40 male beds. And once again, that is a waiting list, and they're always full there. So, once again, I mean, we do a lot of work, I think, and a lot of resources based on that levy fund, so we're very appreciative that, once again, the voters trusted us to continue with that. That's my report. Does anybody have any questions?
Great job on the levy.
Thank you very much. Team effort. All right.
Yeah, I think it's, you don't get that kind of a passing threshold without real buy-in from the community. And I think seeing you out there, even outside of the places where you're active, I mean, Youth Resiliency, they presented a Puanus meeting a couple of weeks back that I was at. So, just getting that word out, not just when it's time to pass a levy, I think is really key, so, well done.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I, I, yeah, I think it's just a testament, obviously, to the collaborative spirit and how the organizations work. And also, the public kind of recognizing the benefit of those dollars. And just thinking with, just looking at one of the elements of the support services, the crisis line. If they didn't have someone to reach out to, what might happen? Anyone could, might become, you know, a headline, unfortunately, a great tragedy, and this prevents that from happening. And those resource, community resources and the coordination with our agencies is essential to making sure that, that at that level, that those kind of, those kind of issues can be addressed, and we can help people that need the help. So, I just thank for all your work of you and the directors.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good day. Thanks.
You too.
Okay, we have a few commissioner resolutions. We have a resolution approving the Northeast Ohio Area-Wide Coordinating Agency Code of Regulation Revisions in NOAC resolution 2023-039 regarding board membership.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
I guess just an explanation, this changes to the, the prior code of regulations that included the mayor of the city of Cleveland. And as an alter, basically, a person that was designated the chief of government affairs for the mayor of the city of Cleveland would then be able to serve. And at that point in time, that, that person would move up to the, be able to serve as an officer of the, of the organization. Since then, Mayor Bibb is reorganized, decided that the mayor wants to take specific involvement with the agency, and therefore, just kind of reverts back to what it actually, the code of regulations that have been in place for over 20 years. So, I think at this point, certainly willing to, the tradition is to respect the wishes of another jurisdiction and the counties and the city of Cleveland on who they choose to represent them.
Roll?
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick.
Yes. Okay, next up, we have a resolution to acknowledge and ratify the approval of the 2023 amended Medina County Emergency Management Agreement by the cities, villages, and townships in Medina County, and to create a permanent record of said approvals.
I will move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I, I wanted to thank everybody, all the communities, that, I know this has been a, a very interesting and somewhat stressful process over the last year in this reorganization of emergency management, the agreement. There's, you know, people typically don't like to change, and some, and people also don't like change. This does both. This changes the organization. Unfortunately, when the organization was created back in 1990, and the communities went through ratification, the agency entrusted with keeping that document, lost the document. And we had copies of it, and there was, there's at least two versions that were referred to. Questions emerged over representation. Likewise, the state law changed, which necessitated changes on our part. And I think this provides the opportunity for the organization itself to add additional members to the table of the community. Certainly, we've seen that, you know, we've added the sheriff, and there'll be some other changes in this, potentially another township representative. But I think it just demonstrates that we're all in this together. I've been, throughout my 18 years as commissioner prior, staunch supporter of EMA. What it needs to do, its planning, and its, its support for, for first responders and emergency services. As a legislator, that was one of my top priorities in acquiring money and support of the EMA mission. And now, back as a commissioner again, want to make sure that this stays as a priority, that our ability for this agency to function, not only in terms of planning and resources, make sure that they've got what they need, but also involving the communities. And I think that's the one thing that got last, over the last three decades. The communities need to be involved at the table and become stakeholders in this. It's just not paying an annual dues. And we know, all of us that are involved in organizations, it's easy enough to do that over a period of time. You just pay the dues and just, okay, don't pay attention. We, you, and this, through the, looking at the code, complying with the Ohio Vise Code, having an advisory council, meeting annually, getting a report, approving budgets, is important for every community that's a partner in this to be involved and support the agency in its missions and goals. And that's the way it's going to achieve, not by one or two individuals or certain authorities having the say, but all communities having a say on how this organization provides those essential services. So, I just want to thank everybody. I know we've got our organizational meeting tomorrow night, which will initiate this. And us journalizing is making sure that some future board of commissioners or communities don't have to say, well, I think that's how we were organized. It's a permanent record. And which case, if there's changes in state law, then we can also accommodate that as well. But I'm just mindful that these changes are important. Those in authority sometimes don't like the change or don't like to change. In this case, these are both needed and necessary. I'm just thankful to all the, all the communities that have signed on and moving this thing forward.
And we are, all of the townships, all of the cities, and all but one of the villages have ratified it prior to this action, which is great, so. And we hope that everybody is well represented at the advisory group meeting tomorrow, which is, it's on our list of public meetings, but tomorrow at 6 o'clock at the sheriff's office. And I just want to also acknowledge the work of both the executive committee and the prosecutor's office, because it was, you know, it was a journey to get to the point of putting an amended agreement together. But I do think, kind of the clarity that we have that you touched on, that it's probably arguably something that we haven't had, whether we thought we had it or not, we haven't probably had it in the organization's history. So, you know, moving forward and knowing we've got established procedures that are compliant, both with the law and the amended agreements, an exciting step forward.
I just want to thank you and Colleen for your leadership on this.
Thank you.
Happy to do it.
Anything else? Roll?
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick.
Yes. Okay, our last commissioner resolution, we are reappointing members to the Medina County Port Authority, Grant Anst, Elizabeth Bux, and Adam Frederick.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, these are reappointments. Just want to thank them, all, all three of them, for their ongoing, long-term involvement and, and the success with Port Authority, which celebrated its 20th, just recently, last couple of weeks, 20th anniversary. And this says a lot, because none of these people are paid to be on this board, and it's very active. It does take a lot of effort, and just want to thank them for their continued involvement and willing to serve the public in this capacity.
Okay, roll?
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Swedick.
Yes. Okay, that's it for commissioner's resolutions. Do we have any public comments today? If not, we are gonna move on to discussion session. And first up, we're gonna have the Law Library Discussion, and we're gonna have Aaron lead that.
Great, thank you. So, we've, just kind of, by way of background, and then, I know we've got some folks here, and I know it's not discussion session, but if it's okay with you, I was gonna let them, let them speak. Oh, yeah, this, we're still in discussion session. Sorry about that. Just, that was a test. I was making sure you were aware where we were.
I'm glad I passed.
No, we, we've had ongoing discussions in terms of this group. The, the focus and the effort and the attention was to get some kind of coordination alignment between, there's the, the Law Library Association and the Resources Board, and then a lot of different stakeholders that may or may not be part of those, those organizations as well. Because, you know, theoretically, there's, there's a public role for the Law Library to serve, and just a service to both the courts and the community who utilizes our, our courts as well. So, the, the issue that we've, I guess, probably the primary issue that has been a challenge since the construction began on the new courthouse, what has been primarily one of related to 24-hour access. And so, the question that we had before us at our last, the last time we discussed this, was whether we'd be open to relocating the facility to a place that was more conducive to 24-hour access. So, we identified some space at 72 Public Square that is available and could be the Law Library's home. It likely will be the temporary home during construction, because once the city's construction commences, there is going to, there, I will say, I guess we don't know for sure, but it's all but certain that there will be a need for some temporary relocation. And so, we kind of identified that space as the, the best temporary space. And speaking with the county administrator and also our facilities folks, the, the, the question was raised, well, if, if we're going to move, maybe we just move them once, move them there, keep that 24-hour access. And so, a couple of weeks ago, we met, I met with some of the various stakeholders from the association and the resources board, and we did a tour of the space at 72. And I think there was, there were some mixed feelings about that. I know the association totally on board with the prospect of being over there, having 24-hour access. And then there were some others that I talked to that said, you know, this space, I mean, it, and I think objectively, it's not, it's not on par with the space that's there right now, that's in the courthouse space. But I think the primary driver of the association was, well, we'll take less pristine space because 24-hour access is that important.
Do you say that important? How many attorneys roughly use it?
Oh, I, I don't, I don't think it's the majority of the users, but, but I think it's, it's been identified by the association. It's kind of their primary objective is to have 24-hour access. So, in any event, the, this, we're still kind of in this place where there's a contingent of people, not within the association. The association's been clear throughout, we'll move, you know, they weren't gonna move, you know, to Lodi or anything, but they would move from the current space to comparable adjacent space for 24-hour access. And then there've been, there's been some others. So, the concern from where I sit is that we're, we're not all that. So, the concern from where I sit is that we're, we're not all that aligned collectively from the, the people who have an interest in this, in terms of where we go. So, I'm going to pause there. I, I don't want to, this is kind of my summary. So I know we've got other folks here, we've got Gina, we've got Ian from the Law Library, we've got...
Well, before anyone speaks, I, I'd like to say, I, I, I will support what the attorneys of the county, you know, would like for their Law Library, but I'm a no-go for 24-hour access in the courthouse. So if, if 24-hour access is the, you know, defining
Mm-hmm.
Appeal for moving, I'm all for moving, but I do get the other spaces nicer.
Yeah.
But I'm a hard line for 24-hour access in our court.
Well, and that's, and, and really, as the conversations evolved, we've kind of evolved away from that. And, and kind of the two options that we were considering when we met earlier this month, late, last month, I forget exactly when it was we met, was, is this, does the 72 Public Square space with 24-hour access offset, yeah, kind of the step back you're taking in terms of overall appeal of the space?
So what about the 72 Public Square location is, I guess, not optimal?
Everything. No, I wouldn't say that.
Well, I'm just asking, is it because of lack of book space, the layout?
Yeah, the, right now, it's, it's got an extra wall in it, and, and there's some, there's some finished space and some unfinished space.
Okay.
And so, when we walked through it with the association, and I know Ralph, I know you took some measurements, I, I think, I think it's objectively, it's less space even with that wall out of there. I didn't know, did we ever get, the floor-to-ceiling, the floor-to-ceiling height, was that sufficient for the bookshelves? Did we decide? Oh, it's not?
Not for the existing.
Okay, okay, so there's, there's a clearance issue for, for the bookshelves?
But are some of the books dated that?
Yeah, there's, some of that hasn't happened in terms of...
Yeah, I mean, you don't have to move all those books, some of them have to be dated, correct?
Would you like a copy of the drawing, first of all, of the space?
Yeah, that's, I'm happy to take a copy of that. So it's, so I guess there are several things on which it wouldn't be considered on par to the current space.
Well, I guess the question is, is what could be done to make it more amenable to their purposes?
Well, and that's probably, I imagine, maybe some of what Ms. Walker's going to offer for us, because the, I know there were some follow-up discussions that the association was going to have after kind of doing the layout of the space. And, and what I'm kind of coming at this from is a perspective of, does even post-work, does it make sense? And so that, that's kind of where I wanted to get some perspectives from the people in the room.
And how much, how much would all these renovations cost us?
Well, that, though, the county, you mean?
Did you say zero?
Yes.
I like zero.
I don't think we've, I don't think we've offered to make available improvements, because the improvements that have been done...
We had made a lot of improvements to the last one, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, but, okay, so that's a non-bearing wall, so...
And that's the, that's the divider, the one that's marked non-bearing is the divider between the finished space and the unfinished space. So the finished space right now is the smaller, it's basically everything to the east, you know, kind of the east half of this. There's the kitchen and the bathroom area, and then basically, the remainder of that space is, is unfinished, more or less unfinished, I would say. So, all in, the square footage over at the Law Library right now is not, this is not one-to-one. I mean, this is not particularly close to being one-to-one to the space that's there now. So, I don't, Pat, Ralph, do you have anything that you want to add, maybe from the association's standpoint with, in relation to the drawings?
Why don't you come up to the mic, Pat? Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank the commissioners for having this discussion, I really appreciate it. I think it's important that everybody view what other people's views are on things, and I understand that the Law Library isn't the most important thing in the county, but it is very important to people who have problems. As was identified, the attorneys with indigent clients, judges, prosecutors, the public and the local attorneys do actually depend on it. And it's one of those things that we may not have huge crowds, but the thing is, that it's very important to the people who are in there. And the association varies on how many attorneys are in it, usually it's between 50 and 75 attorneys. It does vary, they do pay dues of $100 a year for it, so obviously, they're voting and saying that, yes, this is valuable to them. And as the commissioners are aware, the association does have property in the Law Library, the shelves and the tables are association property. We also have a lease, and therefore, in order for us to say, yes, we are willing to move, we have to agree, because we have a lease, we can't just be thrown out. It's different than a lot of the other county agencies. As far as the 72 Public Square, when we did the walkthrough, we were being offered just the part that's on the left. And the part that's on the left would not be appropriate for a permanent Law Library. We could not even put our Ohio, part, all of our Ohio materials, let alone our federal materials, in that area. Today, it sounds like the commissioners are considering both portions of the 72 Public Square. And the Law Library Association met, our board discussed it, and we felt that that would be acceptable place for the Law Library. We have gone through, figured out shelving and how many books and things like that, and we believe that that would work. Our present shelving, though, is too high for that area, so we would have to deal with that, and the movable shelves are too high for that area also. The area right now, obviously, at the minimum, we would ask the county for cleaning and for painting, and, and moving the wall. The association has said that our money that we have, we are willing to put towards renovations, so obviously, that would help out. But, so the association has looked at this. Our members have clearly said that the access is important. We've had meetings, and we asked people, and the interesting part is, the people we're hearing that know that this is not important, didn't happen to pay the $100 for the dues. So, you know, but clearly, the association believes that 24/7 access is very important for the people of Medina, because it's, the issue is that the people of Medina have the problems that the attorneys have to help with. And you all heard about my instance with the client who, a friend who is dying, and suddenly, we had to do a will, and at 10 o'clock at night, we're in there, it happens, and you have to have...
Can I ask you a question? How many members of the Law Library Association are there?
Between, it varies between like 50 to 75.
So not all members of the Medina Bar Association are members of the Law Library Association?
No, that's correct.
Okay.
And then not all, not all local attorneys are members of our association.
Okay.
So, you know, it just depends. And obviously, the access was very important, so when the access was cut off, a few of the attorneys decided it wasn't worth paying the $100 to go. And I want to point out that the access was there from about 1975 till 2021, even after all the security was put in. So that was like 46 years. So it has been the tradition and the custom that the access, after-hours access, has been there.
So, are you, I'm sorry, Steve, you're, you're, the association is saying, if the space were opened up, you'd be able to take the space, but conditioned upon the county doing the, the demolition of the wall and the cleaning, or the painting of cleaning, I'm sure isn't an issue, but...
I, what we're saying is that we would like the county to do that, I don't think that's the, the non-starter, but I, we would like that. I mean, obviously, you also have the Legal Resources Board, which is moving, which is a county agency, and it's not moving because it wants to. I mean, it's not like we're saying to the commissioners, hey, we really want better space, we want to move.
Well, but the, the request is for 24-hour access that, that would happen there, but doesn't happen in the other space, so there is a trade-off.
Well, I agree, but the issue is, okay, let's go and say, all right, the Law Library stays in the current spot.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we've got a problem. The city has decided that there's going to be an elevator shaft through the middle of the Law Library. So it, Law Library as it stands right now is not going to be what the Law Library would be after the city is through with their construction, and...
Is that, Chris, is that confirmed?
The lease reflects that, yes.
It, I don't know that it's smack in the middle, I think it's more, it is kind of to the edge of the space, yeah. But, but there, it is going to change.
I wasn't talking geographically, but I mean, you are talking about it is in the Law Library space.
Yeah, it's in that space.
Which we don't know what actually will happen during construction to have to change. I mean, you know, you know, people can say, okay, well, it's only taking this corner, but I mean, what happens to the Law Library? I mean, you, you obviously will have a area that you'll need to paint, you'd need to, you know, you need to clean, you'd need to paint. There's asbestos in the Law Library, so then there's the question of, once you actually open up the ceiling and are putting in an elevator shaft, are you exposing the rest of the Law Library to asbestos? So do we have to clean out the asbestos for the entire rest of the Law Library? These are things we don't know. The other interesting issue, if the Law Library stays in its current position, is that then we have a space that is county-operated, but all the utilities are, will be controlled by the city. So when we have a problem with any of our utilities, what do we do? We call the county, and then the county has to, maintenance has to call the city to talk to it, but there's that issue too. So there's a lot of issues. When you're looking at whether or not we take 72 Public Square with after-hours access versus the current location, you can't look at the current location as the current location, how it looks right now. It will be changed, and how it will be changed is unknown, but it definitely would not be, okay, the city puts in the elevator shaft, and then nothing has to be done in the Law Library to make it livable.
So my, I guess my thought, I'd not, not to dispute kind of the essence of what you're saying, but really, the, the space, the courthouse space is aesthetically, right now, and probably even after, because the, the city's not just going to put an elevator shaft there and then, and then be done, they're going to be, there's going to be finished work and everything else, because they, part of their, their understanding is, the carve-out in their lease, there's a carve-out of space that's been specific for the Law Library throughout the process. So it's not, I mean, it's not going to be an unfinished product, project when they're done. So what remains aesthetically is already superior to 72. And it, maybe that's, maybe that's debatable, I personally don't think it is, and I guess that's the nature of aesthetics too, but, but also practically, you know, it does have space for the books, albeit some reconfiguration might be necessary. So, it, it seems to me, especially when we start talking about, you know, the county knocking out walls and things, that, that really is not part of what, you know, what I thought we'd signed up for, you know, that maybe the better solution is, is what we've got with, with some modifications.
Well, okay, knocking out the wall was not in, the association did not say, you know, that we would not take 72 Public Square if you didn't knock out the wall.
Okay, gotcha.
I said what would be liked. We did not, the issue of the painting and knocking out the wall was not part of our resolution. We did ask the county clean it, but I don't really think that's...
I don't think that's going to be a problem.
That's a problem, yeah.
Okay.
The wall and the painting were not part of our resolution. I, you just said, what would we like?
Gotcha.
Now that's what we would like, that's not what we're saying. The other thing, there are advantages to the 72 Public Square. One, it has windows, which, you know, obviously, it's one of the few agencies in the county that doesn't have any windows right now. The Law Library has no windows, 72 Public Square does have two windows, which, you know, is a little thing, but it's still good. The other thing it has, is it does have a restroom in it, which is an advantage in that you don't have, you just have the public that's using the Law Library using the restroom versus you have, at the present location, you have the public restroom that absolutely everybody's using, which means that there's an advantage, because you do have the storage in the restroom that you can use, that you wouldn't have otherwise. It also has a kitchen, so it does have advantages in that way. So there are advantages to 72 Public Square, and there's disadvantages. However, I think that those things also help, and I think that's why it could make it a much better place to be. I think that, you know, that it can work. And the question was, is, are there books that could not have to be moved? Previously, the Legal Resources Board had decided that things like the Atlantic Reporter and the Pacific Reporter that are on the movable shelves were not going to be updated. So right now, they are there, but I believe that the Legal Resources Resolution, which was a long time ago, a couple of years ago, was that we would get rid of them, but there really wasn't a mechanism to get rid of them, and we had the space, so we didn't get rid of them. So yes, there are books that can be eliminated, and as I said, when we figured out the space, it did appear that we had the linear shelving space for the books that remain.
And so you do have some funds in your, your account, if you, if you did want to pay to potentially get rid of the bearing wall?
Yes, and the association...
Non-bearing wall.
Non-bearing wall, excuse me.
Yes, we don't get rid of bearing walls.
This is an important distinction.
Yes, the association has had a resolution, we, that they were willing to spend money that is, you know, in the association's, it's a private account for the renovations, so we would be willing to do that. And we did have a meeting since the walkthrough, so I mean, everything has been put through to the association, all the warts of 72 Public Square, all the advantages of 72 Public Square have been to the board, and they had made the resolution. The Legal Resources Board has not met since the walkthrough.
So we might, is it fair to say that the, kind of on balance, and I know I'm oversimplifying, so I apologize, I'm trying to put words in your mouth, but on balance, the, if all else is equal, the tipping point that makes 72 more attractive is 24-hour access?
Yes.
Well, they seem to like the kitchen and the bathroom also.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, among other things, the bigger driver.
Now, so you're going to be able to handle then the new shelving that's going to be required, as well as the, the compact storage changes?
Well, we believe that, from our initial consultation, is that the initial shelving can be renovated to...
Basically remove the top shelf, so you can fit it in that space?
Yeah, on that, or, on the movable shelves, we're not sure we can do that, but there could, but also, there's shelving in it, so we do have to look at it. Our initial impression is that yes.
Oh, okay, all right. So what are you asking, I guess, comes down to, I'm supportive of it, this being a more permanent or long-term solution for you, the question, just, what do you, what could we do to help, so that you can find, and I think this is mutually beneficial, not only to the association, the bar, and all the, and the public, but also to the county, being able to, to locate in 72 Public Square?
There are a few other moving parts that we, that we need to talk about, because as it relates to the mechanics of the lease, you mentioned lease, and you meant, there's a couple of things that you mentioned, that I think, from other discussions that have been had between the Resources Board, specifically with the county prosecutors involved, I know there's a difference of opinion on that, we've talked about that in passing, and frankly, I, I'm not interested in having those other peripheral issues derailing, you know, a, a mutual agreement that can, can get things done. But because there is some uncertainty that relates back to, without boring everybody... But because there is some uncertainty that relates back to, without boring everybody, I think it was a 2010 law that kind of transitioned things from a Law Library Association to a public body Resources Board. In connection with that, you've continued maintaining membership and things like that. But there were, there was also language related to, you know, transferring assets, and, and I know not all of those things have been fleshed out, and like I said, my, my goal with this would be any move, any, really, any reconfiguration at all would be incident to getting, because right now, it's a, is it an MOU? I think it's technically an MOU, or a...
MOU.
Well, um, that's debatable, because the...
And I would ask, and I'm not...
Yeah, because the resolution says this agreement between these people, and then the document itself says it's...
It's an MOU. So there's some, there's some room for interpretation there.
Yeah.
I think we'd agree on that.
Well, let's put it this way, there's at least two sides on interpretation.
Right, right.
If, if the bottom line, what you're asking is, would the association agree to either amend that or somehow change that in the process of this location?
Well, what I...
The answer's yes.
Okay, yeah. More to the point, what I'd like to see is the county have an agreement of some type, but I think the appropriate body that we ought to have that agreement with would be the Resources Board. Because the Resources Board is the party by statute that's obligated to operate the law library. So I, and, you know, I know, we, ours, whatever you would say about it is probably a harbinger of the past, and I think probably ought to have been updated before we got to this point. So I just want that to be kind of a condition of, any step forward would be just that we've got, we're, we're clear in terms of what it is. And I think, you know, as part of that, does it need to be a lease? Does it, I don't know what it needs to be, but I just, I'd like to put the, some of those, you know, uncertainties to rest through all of this.
No, I agree. I, I think it's the best for the association, it's the best for Legal Resources Board, that I can't speak for them, but, and then obviously, the county. I, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
There, there, there is no hesitancy to be able to resolve that issue. We are willing to resolve that issue as long as our major issue is that we have to agree where we're being relocated to, or being relocated. Definitely.
Okay. Do you have any other thoughts on, on that? I, I know there's other folks in the room, I don't know if anybody else has anything else to share, but...
Uh, no, I, I believe that I was, was able to give you all my opinions, and I appreciate this today. Thank you.
Ian, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Yep. I should bring the mic to you. I feel bad now.
Well, I was going to ask the board's indulgence. It's because of a trip to see theater that I'm wearing a boot, and my ability to do theater enables me to project from there, but if this is being recorded, I will come up here. Thanks also for the opportunity to speak with you folks about this. I'm the law librarian and representative of the Legal Resources Board, which statutorily has the responsibility for operating our law library. Part of my hesitancy is, are we at the beginning of a discussion or further along in a discussion? I, I think the idea of moving to 72 Public Square as a temporary measure while construction is going on to accommodate the city and the municipal court is an appropriate discussion, but I don't know if it's, this is the time to have it, or, or if it's a discussion that we need to have also with the representatives of the city, their architect, to get some sense as to where they're going and when they're going, and when we might have to move.
I can address that right now, because I, the thought is, if there is a permanent move in the works, we could do that sooner rather than later. And if that space that's currently, the law library is vacated, we might have our partners in the city, they might jump at the chance to have some more space there.
Gotcha.
It, in that sense, it, it may be an artificial deadline, but I, the more of these pieces of, and parts we can take off the table, I think the better for everybody, for the sake of clarity.
Okay.
And, and you do know if there, if it was a temporary move to 72, and we did go back to the courthouse, there wouldn't be 24-hour access?
The, the position of the Resources Board is that 24/7 access is important if we stayed where we are. To move for 24/7 access is nothing that the Resources Board wants. For, you know, any, any law library that is in a courthouse, which is the case in Cleveland, which is in the ca, the case in Akron, and indeed in Franklin County, it's part of the complex, all law libraries in those kinds of buildings are open whenever those buildings are open. If those buildings are closed, the law library is closed. And somehow, the attorneys in Cleveland, Columbus, and Akron are able to conduct their legal affairs without 24/7 access. We, we were very spoiled. We had 24/7 access, we had free access to the online computing services, and that changed. So now, to have that kind of access to legal resource, legal research, you have to buy, lawyers have to buy their own subscriptions to Westlaw or LexisNexis, or the State Bar Association has a research service. So, you know, most attorneys have adjusted and have incorporated that into their budgets and their fees. There was an informal meeting over at Judge Hudson's office several months ago, and he asked the, the 25 folks who were there, any sense as to whether or not 24/7 access is important? Three people said yes. We on the Resources Board do not consider 24/7 access to be that critical. 72 Public Square, right now, is a hovel, for want of a better term. It is, it is totally inappropriate for a law library. It will require major cleanup, renovation, and just as you heard, that there may be some noise created by an elevator, I suggest you come in there and be in the basement when a toilet is flushed, because you will hear it. There is no, half of the, the space does not have recessed ceilings the way this, this has, and the way the law library in the courthouse has. So we have all of these open piping, the pipes. Yet the lighting is terrible. I invited all the members of the Resources Board to go over and take a look at the space. Rebecca Clark and Yumi Kim Reynolds did. The other members of the board have not seen it. So I really don't have the authority to say, I'm speaking on behalf of the Resources Board, since there has been no formal vote or anything like that, but I would suggest that the Resources Board wants to stay where we are.
And this, that, so this kind of illustrates the dynamic that I was alluding to at the beginning, which is, what I had hoped, a couple of months back, when we convened kind of everybody here the first time, was that maybe we'd get some sort of consensus on the issue of which is more important, staying where we are or having 24-hour access? And unfortunately, it appears we're no close.
You have no consensus, is what you're telling me?
Yeah, I don't, I, I wasn't, I was trying to sugarcoat that some...
Are we surprised, a, a profession that is trained for adversarial, take either side of an argument and make it, has difficulty coming to agreement?
So, your board is okay with a temporary move and then move back?
If that's where we have to go, I guess, yeah.
So...
And I don't even know what we'd go.
So what, have, have you given any thought to what temporary move looks like?
No.
Because you don't have to do it yet.
No.
Nobody's really thought about in terms of what needs to move temporarily. Because that was, to, from my perspective, that was the driving force of, I guess, to your point, somewhat accelerating the conversation, was, hey, if we're going to move there and that's going to be the permanent home, we might as well do it sooner rather than later. If that's not a suitable permanent home, you know, that's a different story.
Yeah.
So...
I would be happy to engage in with, with whomever, and for whatever reason, discussions on a permanent move, I mean, a temporary move while the construction is going on. I mean, absolutely. Can I point out, despite, the Law Library Association is a private, not-for-profit entity that's been around for quite a while, its role as providing legal research services for the county, for the lawyers in this town, for indigent folks or whatever, has been taken over by the Resources Board. We provide that. We have the books, we have the computers. There's a dispute over who owns the shelves. The association claims it was bought with private money. As Commissioner Hamblay probably records, recalls, years and years ago, under the prior system, the law library was permitted to retain 10% of its budget. That was, was the source of the, the private fund. So what started out as public funds became private funds.
And when I asked if there was funds for renovation, so it's your association that controls the funds?
No.
No, it's the association, not the Resources Board.
And this is, I, this is the part that, these are some of those issues that I alluded to, that I, if there's a way to resolve it without us crossing the threshold into those things, because there, that's where I think this goes from, where's the, where's the law library going to be located, which is one discussion, to what are the more significant implications of, you know, certain assets that the association's claiming? And I think it's best, my, just, this is my opinion, that the county stay out of that discussion.
You are an attorney.
All together, yes. But I think, I, I would love for the Resources Board and the association to sort anything that needs to be sorted out on that, after, separate and apart from the discussion over, over locating the space.
So at least, from your perspective, for the Resources Board, temporary location of a law library access during construction, 69 courthouse, 72 Public Square can be remodeled sufficiently for those purposes on a temporary basis? Is that correct?
If there's no other space?
If there's no other space.
I, I guess it would have to be. Unless you could put us in the new building somewhere, which would have been the desirable thing.
Sure.
But aside from that, you control where we go.
Right.
There's no question under statute, you decide that. And we will, as a Resources Board, work with you to make it as, as possible and as workable for, for everybody concerned. But it's, it's our, it's the Resources Board by statute that has the responsibility for setting rules for public access and the hours of operation. It's, it's nobody else. And let me also make one other comment. The, the good thing about it being in the courthouse where it is, there are two things, at least. One is attorneys who are using, are in, in court and need to come down and, and do some quick research are able to come right down, go over there and do it. I'm not even sure they would be able to get from the old, from the current building into 72 Public Square without going outside.
They wouldn't.
Probably not.
They wouldn't, no, yeah.
That's the point of no 24-hour access.
Yeah. And, and the other part of it, quite honestly, one good thing about where we are is there is security. If somebody from the public, public wants to come in and use our law library, that person has to go through the security system. If it's 72 Public Square, where I am as the mediator, court mediator, and, and Matt, not Matt, Max, Max Miller is the congressman, there is open access to, to come to us. I'm not fearful, I don't think Max is either, but I don't know that we want a load of folks consciously coming into that building without having gone through security. And I'm not asking that you put up security at 72, but, you know, I think that really is an advantage to staying in...
I believe there are some internal security, at least for the congressman's office, a PFAB system or something of that nature, that we won't get into, but I, I just don't want people to think that it's, you know, open season.
No, it's the same, same for us, same system.
Okay. I think that, so, thank you. That's, I was going to say helpful, maybe that's not the right word. I don't know what word I should use, but I appreciate your perspective.
What's the next step?
Wait, was there anybody else that wanted to speak on this issue?
Stan, you have anything to say?
Sure. I'll speak.
While, while Ralph's coming up, do, in the, in the scenario where the, just a question for Chris, in the scenario where the law library doesn't go to 72, is there anything else that's on the, is there anything else in the works for moving into that space right now?
Into which?
72.
72.
Sorry, Ralph.
Just a couple of comments. There are some other options for tenants in that lower level of 72. We'll have to make a decision about, you know, what's the best fit. We're assuming that there's going to be a temporary relocation, but that's an assumption. I think it's a good assumption that there's going to be disruption to power...
Right.
And mechanical systems in the 69 building during the construction period, at least a part of that construction period. But it, it still is an assumption. The city is still in the midst of requesting qualifications for architect services. There's no final drawings. We're assuming, again, that there is going to be an elevator shaft that's going to be positioned to approximately in the area of the law library office, the current law library office. But again, there's no final drawings, there's, there's just some preliminary conceptual drawings that have been put together, just to show perhaps where the space layout will be for the municipal court operation. So I just want to make clear, there's nothing currently finalized with regard to the city's construction process. They haven't even selected an architect yet...
Right.
...to proceed with designing the space. And again, we're assuming that there's going to be a need to temporarily relocate the law library, or a portion of the law library, to another location.
During some phase of that...
During some phase of that construction.
Okay.
And we've identified that lower level of 72 Public Square as currently available and possible for that temporary use. Just, so I just wanted to make that clear.
But the law library is currently not part of the lease between us and the city. Square footage, correct?
The square footage is carved out and not contained within the city usage of space in the 69 building for lease purposes.
Not all of it.
Okay.
Right.
There's a portion of it, there's a...
Except for, except for the elevator shaft area.
Right.
But again, there's a chance, if that design doesn't prove to be necessary, and that elevator shaft doesn't need to go in that location, there could be another, there could be an amendment to that lease agreement with the city that would show an increase in the law library space and a decrease in that space if it's not required for purposes of the city municipal court operation.
Right.
So there are still things that are certainly unknown at this point. We're going to continue to work through it. We're going to have conversations with the city about their progress on their project. And I just wanted to make a couple of those points to...
That's helpful.
So, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ralph Jock. I just wanted to speak on behalf of the taxpayers of the county. I mean, it does sound highly probable that you're going to have to relocate the law library. And if you're going to have to relocate the law library, why don't you spend the money? Spend it once, do it in a way that can be the ongoing home of the law library, and serve the needs of both the public and the lawyers, so that 24/7 access is available? I know Ian talked about what goes on in Cleveland, what goes on in Akron, Columbus. Those cities have large law firms. Medina County is not populated by large law firms that can afford a library staff, research associates, access to electronic databases. I mean, we don't have that. We have a lot of sole practitioners. And they rely on access to the law library in order to do legal research and to represent their clients. And so 24/7 access is the overwhelming issue for them, because the...
Is it a fair statement, though, that the law libraries across the state, even the small ones, do not have 24 hours?
It depends. It, it depends.
No.
No, it does depend. I haven't done a survey, so I can't speak to it.
Okay.
Also, I wanted to mention, Bill Hudson, as far as, this is the first I've heard, that Bill Hudson was having meetings with lawyers about this topic. He didn't invite everybody. So what his conclusions may have been, may not have been the kind of consensus that you actually get when you invite a broad group, like people who are members of the Law Library Association. So anyway, I would, I, speaking just on behalf of fiscal responsibility, move it once, do it right, and it won't please everybody, nothing ever does, but you will be serving more of the community and more of the lawyers. of the community and more of the lawyers. One other point, and I don't mean to be contentious with this, but I don't care what statutes the state legislature may choose to pass, but it cannot change existing contracts, it cannot take property that's held privately away from people. And there is a lease. And that lease is valid, binding, and signed by all the proper representatives. And although it may say memorandum of understanding on the top.
It does.
Well, yeah, it does, on the top, but the entire body of it says agreement. Thank you.
Thanks, Ralph. And I think the one thing this illustrates is there are a lot of different opinions about this topic. So as I sit here, I, above all else, I want clarity. I really don't want that clarity to come at the expense of us picking one side over the other. I just want clarity. And part of the clarity I want is on those last points you made, Ralph, because I know that is the association's perspective on that. I also know if we went to the prosecutor's office, they have a very different perspective on whether or not that's a lease.
Then who are your prosecutors?
Well, okay, that's true. The one we have now, I know their answer. That's the one that matters, though. And right, like any legal issue, different minds can come to different conclusions. So I'm not saying that to, again, to be contentious, I'm just saying that there is room for interpretation there. And so the thing that I would like to see above all else is that clarity. And so the clarity, from my perspective, comes if we get, you know, the parties at the table to move forward on a universal solution that results in fixing the uncertainty created by the past. And part of the fix, from, as I said before, and I've said throughout, is getting the memorandum of understanding, lease agreement, whatever we want, whatever terminology we want to use, kind of remove the association from that step in the process, because that does create some challenges. The association has said clearly, that's going, that only comes with 24-hour access. So I guess my question, Chris, for you.
Yes.
Is if we were to move the Law Library temporarily to 72.
Yes.
And then move it back, and the fiscal responsibility argument is not lost on me, but I also heard the association would be requesting us to move a retaining, or non-retaining wall if they were to stay there full-time. So I don't know how that all offsets with the move costs. But if we move them there temporarily, move them back, or they move back to the current space for whatever period of time is interrupted by that, would there be any option of leaving some of that space in 72 available with the potential for 72, 24-hour access in that specific space where they could have, you know, basically, when we talk about 24-hour access, it's more about electronic research than having access to books.
But you wouldn't be talking kitchen, bathroom, this whole space.
Some carve out of it, and that's why I asked about.
Because it could be used for other depart, other things, correct?
Yeah, you would have to, I think, discuss competing needs in the future, if that's a permanent annex of sorts.
That's kind of what I'm thinking, is some kind of an annex space that could be available to solve the 24-hour access issue. Then I think we'd have probably a better mechanism for evaluating it in the future, too.
So are you talking just maybe some small area that has access to a computer 24 hours with Lexis, LexisNexis? I hate that word.
You've got most of it, yeah. Yeah, and maybe, maybe there'd be the need for a printer there.
But not this footprint that could be used for another department.
No, we, I mean, a couple, a couple, maybe two computer terminal type of thing. And I don't know, again, property-wise, obviously, that's a discussion for the association, the Resources Board, to decide how those resources are best allocated. But that's the scenario from where I sit that allows us to address the concerns. I mean, you know, Pat, I know that wasn't in front of your board, but is that something in as much as it results in 24-hour access that the association could live with?
I really couldn't talk until I talked to the board. We absolutely work through the board. We do have a meeting on Thursday. But I do want to make it clear, I keep hearing that the wall needs to be moved for the association to be acceptable for the 72 Public Square. That is not part of this. We, that is a, that would be nice. That is not a requirement for us at all.
Gotcha, gotcha. I just meant, I guess, to the extent it's being moved, it wasn't part of what the association was, had already acted on. But again, I'm trying to put that in the rearview and get the, the reconfiguration would be off the table if we've, if we can create some annex space that has 24-hour access to computers and then all the, because I heard compelling arguments on both sides. I think there's a compelling argument for the potential 24-hour access. I think there's a compelling argument for keeping the Law Library right where it is. So to the extent the county has the space available and we can achieve the clarity that we lack right now.
But the requirement or the need to potentially move them is contingent upon what the city plans to do with the 69 Courthouse, correct?
That's right.
And their architects, and that is yet to be determined.
Correct.
So at this point, I think the next step is obviously working with the city and see what their plans are in much more definition.
If there's no.
Right.
Permanent relocation.
But there might be still in the process, knowing that if they may not have to move, that maybe there could be the creation of that annex for those purposes for the 24/7.
I think Ian's argument.
Regardless, so whether it's temporary or not, whether they have to move at all. Okay.
Ian's argument is very compelling that there would be some attorneys that would like, that they're working in a building that does have 21st century security, correct? I think that's a compelling argument.
No, I agree, I agree. But if they're not going to have to move even, I mean, spend a lot of resources moving and then moving back, maybe we ought to also, like I said, like two paths. One, we were with the city, the other is, how could this space in the end, whatever happens, create an annex so they can have remote, or they can basically have 24/7 just when it comes to the computer terminals and so forth.
Well, the opposite.
The problem is that the legal books that are the most valuable.
Right.
Often are not available online.
Oh, okay.
Such as?
That's the problem.
Can I point out, we are just adopting a system that we entered into with Lexis or I could, where there, we now have eBooks that are check-out-able remotely.
Oh.
And it is just starting. And really, the letter is going out within the next week or so to let members of the bar know that they are able to, as I say, check out books remotely on their computers.
Not necessarily what they need, but.
But those would, but those would supplement some of the ones that aren't otherwise available on the, online?
Yes.
We didn't know that.
Well, now you do.
Well, no, no.
So you're saying there's actually potentially, or probably, a technological solution to some of this?
There is right now a technological solution.
Attorneys can subscribe to LexisNexis or Westlaw or Decisis, or whatever it is, through the State Bar Association. They pay for that, and then they can also, as members of the Bar Association, hook up with the Law Library and check out books under this new e-check system. Whether or not that's 100%, I certainly don't know. But for the overwhelming amount of research that needs to be done by most lawyers, it's probably available for them. I'm not going to say 100%, but I would venture to say most research can be done with the systems that we have available.
I will point out that one of the reasons why, when the commissioners were initially looking at the Law Library and saying, okay, we could have two computer terminals, the issue is that there are cases that are not in the legal, electronic legal research. I keep having cases cited against me in briefs, and you can't find them online at all, which I'm just mentioning because I, you know, have no, I can't say, well, most of the attorneys need that, or most of the attorneys do this. We don't know.
Are those, are those unpublished opinions kind of thing?
No, they're old.
They're old, okay.
The most illegal resources, I'm not sure where the line is, but about 1920, 1900, they don't have those because they just didn't want to spend money to.
And there's not a requirement that they provide a copy of those when they're citing those in their briefs?
No.
Hmm, that's interesting. So I guess that the other thing that I'm thinking about in terms of the annex discussion is, because we don't know, and I think Commissioner Hamblin makes a good point on that, because we don't know the status of the, any space that the city might need, that would, that would replace that, and I hesitate to use that word because I think some of the gray areas in terms of the documentation we have right now, my reading of it, there's no requirement for any amount of square footage, but, you know, just to kind of offset and make that whole. So I guess my ask from the board's perspective is if we get some affirmation that the association says, yeah, we're willing to move forward with an opportunity to resolve these issues, if 24-hour access is available elsewhere, maybe we, you know, we can work together to try and put the pieces together with the prosecutor's office to make that happen. Obviously, it's dependent upon the association taking some action, but you said they have a meeting later this week?
Well, on the issue of whether or not the association is willing to do something with the current lease, the association has already said that they are willing, and the board has ruled that they are willing. The association has said that if we can get appropriate 24/7 access in a reasonable facility, which we have determined that 72 Public Square would be reasonable, that we are, we do believe that we can resolve that issue. So we, the association as a board has said that already. We aren't, we aren't wedded with the idea that we have to have, you know, this continuing lease with the county. We are willing to negotiate and do something about it if the other aspects.
And the prosecutor's office is still determining whether it's a lease or MOU or?
No, I think they've made their determination. I think it's, so.
Yeah, so we keep saying it's a lease, but that's not what the prosecutor's office.
But really, our, the problem we have is we can't have, we have a statutory obligation to provide space to the Law Library Resources Board. We have a statutory obligation to do that. We have a document, whatever you want to call it, that is with the association, that maybe ought to have been transferred to the Resources Board, maybe it shouldn't have been, but it wasn't. In fact, it hasn't been. It didn't happen, at least in 2010. Whether it should have been or not, I think is probably an open issue and one that you'd have a lot of different opinions on, especially if you surveyed this room. But we can't get ourselves in a situation where we say, okay, we're going to carve out this space for the association and then have the Resources Board come back and say, well, where's our statutory space? And that's what I, that's, when I say clarity, that's exactly what I'm talking about, is having two different paths.
Well, I think I'd like some more clarity then from the prosecutor, I mean.
I think the clarity needs to come from the association because really, we're not, we're not going to get anywhere, it's really not worth the time to put into it if we don't have the clarity that the association's going to accept that in, as part and parcel of getting a document or kind of relieving whatever remains under that MOU.
One thing I would like to point out is that the prosecutor's office is the attorneys for the Legal Resources Board, and I was a member of the Legal Resources Board until recently, and until the last year, the prosecutor's office did treat it as a lease. They've changed their view recently, so it's not a clear issue because of, I would say, that when the prosecutor's office was advising the Legal Resources Board previously, they did treat it as a lease, and that's what it was called in the, I believe, in the, when there's testimony on the LexisNexis issue. So it is not, it is not a absolute, you know, okay, that the prosecutors absolutely say that it's an MOU, right now that's their view, yes. However, that is.
And you do, you do know we greatly rely on the word of the prosecutor with regards to legal matters?
I understand that.
Okay.
But I'm just telling you that the prosecutor's office have not always had that view of that document.
So I.
And what I'm saying is that the association absolutely is willing to deal with that issue because I don't have an offer from the county saying, okay, so we're willing to do, if we do X, are you willing to do something about the agreement? Right now, it's kind of squishy up in the air, and obviously, we're not going to say absolutely we're going to do something without knowing what we're, what's happening on the other end.
Well, and I think that's, that's where I wanted to have this discussion, at least from the commissioner's perspective. Is there, is there anybody up here, if it can resolve the other issues, that would say absolutely no to the, to the idea of having a Law Library annex at 72 with, like we talked about, not moving any walls, we're not, but just to provide some electronic access that could be available 24 hours?
All right.
I'm in favor of that, I just didn't know if.
You mean staying in 69 and just having some sort of kiosk?
Right.
In 72?
That would have 24-hour access, we keep the space where it is and secure.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have no objections to it. I guess, like, right now, we're still premature.
We don't have.
A lot of this because we don't know what the city of Medina and all those details at this point. I guess, let's see how this plays out.
Well, let me just say this, even if, even if the city of Medina doesn't take any space from 69.
Do an annex.
If, if, if an annex just got us the clarity on the association issues, I'd be in favor of doing that, too.
But it wouldn't, it would be just something.
Just limited space, small footprint, couple computers, maybe a printer, and I'll leave that to the.
Ian, did you, you raised your hand before.
I was just going to add, if I might, if the lawyers who drafted the memorandum of understanding wanted to call it a lease, they would have had lease.
I agree.
That's one thing we do, we want it to be a lease.
This is quickly devolving into a first-year property class, and I want to.
Second thing I would point out is that it expires in two years. And if one side, such as the county commissioners, decides it does not want to renew it, it is not renewed.
I guess I was unaware that it expired in two years. Thank you, Ian.
January of 2026 is when it would expire. This is where in the death rose of the second 10-year extension, because it went into effect January of 2006, it was extended for one 10-year, for a second 10-year, and it expires January of 2026.
I would say the drafter of it believes it is a lease, but, you know, we're not going to.
Okay.
But the one thing I'd like to know is whether or not the commissioners are in favor of whether or not it would be appropriate for 72 Public Square, for the Law Library to move there and be there permanently. The issue of the annex was only brought up today, has never been brought up previously, so there is no view of the association on that proposal.
Well, I'd heard, I had heard some other discussions from some other folks. I think actually Elizabeth Buck's was made our agenda today for Port Authority, and she had suggested, well, maybe there's a kiosk at the county law, they're the county library because they have more expanded hours. And so those kinds of discussions that have been had, and quite frankly, in the vein of people who say, we really like the Law Library space we have, has been where it kind of led to me throwing that out there as a possibility. I, if your question is, do the commissioners have any objections to the relocation of 72, I think from what I've heard today, I didn't hear any that were there, but I don't think that, at least from my perspective, I won't speak for my colleagues up here, I don't really want to get myself in a situation where I'm picking between following what the association wants or what the Resources Board wants. And we've given a fair bit of time for there to be a consensus between the organizations. One has not materialized, and so these kind of hybrid solutions, you know, I think that's what we're left with.
And some permanent decisions are, you know, premature until we know what's going on with the city's plans.
Right, right. Although, again, I'm telling you definitively, if the, if, as we've heard previously and then also today, that 24-hour access is the driver for a solution of this, and 24-hour access can be added in annex irrespective of the city's plans, I'd do that right now. But I'm just speaking for myself, so.
That's fine. I agree.
Well, that was, now I'll say that was helpful. I didn't say it when Ian was done speaking. I'm glad we got everybody's perspectives on there. Appreciate everybody taking the time to be here and sharing. I think the next step, I guess, Pat, if you want to let me know what happens as a result of the next association meeting?
Absolutely. And I do appreciate the commissioners taking the time today to discuss this topic.
Oh, it wasn't that much time. No.
Really? Okay. So, all right, Chris, do you have anything else?
I don't mean to joke, I'm glad we were able to do it, too.
Chris, do you have anything else?
Just a couple of quick updates. Firstly, we opened the proposals for jail and detention center and food services. Those were due at 2:30 PM on November 2nd. We received two proposals, one had two options. I've provided. I've provided, I put together a summary of those proposals. The, I met with the detention superintendent, the jail administrator, and the sheriff and to evaluate the proposals. There seems to be a consensus regarding which proposal they prefer based on the evaluation rankings. There is some negotiation that's currently ongoing, particularly with regard to juvenile detention pricing structure. And so I would hope to get a final recommendation from them to you via a resolution for next Tuesday's agenda to award the proposal and then enter into contract negotiations with the selected firm. So I provide that for your information, just kind of an alert that there'll be something presented, I believe, next Tuesday for you.
What's our current pricing of the detention center?
It is up top. It depends on population.
Oh, yeah, there is.
It depends on population.
Thank you.
It's in the shaded box to the right-hand side.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome. There was a call I received from a company that had provided a quote for a sustainability study to you, and I thought perhaps if we could just discuss that for a second.
I forgot to do it last week, so I have a sticky that says bring up sustainability. Yeah.
So they were looking to see if there was a decision about whether to move forward with something or not.
I'm okay with not moving forward on this.
Yeah, I agree. Not necessarily take any action on it right now. We've got the NOAC is moving forward, and we've appointed somebody to represent us as well as some others, and let's continue to see how that plays out. I was hopeful that, hopefully bring to them the idea that we, when it comes to weather resiliency and planning and other actions we're taking within the county through our various departments and public agencies and the businesses, that that gets taken into account in terms of development of a future plan, but we'll see.
Well, and I think, I do appreciate, it kind of came up quickly, and Verity was, they put that together quickly for us, and I think there could be need for something like that in the future, but maybe we could take some time to tailor it a little bit more.
Right.
And go back to them. So I agree that it's not the right time, but I appreciate their efforts to put something together for us.
Would you like me to communicate that to them?
That'd be great.
That would be great.
Please, thank you.
I will do that. Couple other updates. Emergency management project, construction project bid specs. I had checked in with the project architect last week. He stated in response that we should have the bid specs sometime this week. I think, as you recall, we did not authorize the bid process pending the receipt of the bid specs from the architect with a final estimate attached to that. So once we've received those bid specs, I'll obviously provide that information to you and then subsequently present a resolution authorizing the --
So we probably won't be on resolution for next Tuesday, the Tuesday after?
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable assumption, right? So, just so you're aware.
We have an anticipated length of time to go out for bid. We're going to give like two, three weeks, four hours?
Well, we needed to have some discussion about the timing with the holiday season coming.
Right.
When the most optimal time to hit the bid spec market would be. And I'll segue into that. We also have a veteran services design that's wrapping up, and those bid specs will be completed shortly also. So discussion with that architect, a different architectural firm, will be had also with regard to the timing of the bidding for that project also, whether we try to get that done in December or whether we try to, or we get it done in January and get past the holiday season. So.
Well, veteran services, we don't have the time constraints and the end of completion of the project as we do for EMA.
Correct. You just have the obligation of funds deadline for veteran services, which should not be an issue, no matter when we go out to bid. It's just a matter of, on the veteran services side, getting the most interest in the project from a bidding standpoint and therefore hopefully getting a lower price, so.
Okay.
Okay. And finally, one other item, sorry. I had worked with the auditor's office briefly last week to put together a tax rate resolution to present to you. This would be for collection year 2024. This would be establishing importantly, the split between the bond retirement fund and the general fund for the 2.5 inside mills, which we are statutorily entitled to. I've drafted a resolution that indicates that split going from the current split of 2.14 for general fund to, and .36 for bond retirement, which is for debt service. That would be modified based on this draft for next year to 2.30 for general fund operating purposes and a reduction to .20 for the general bond retirement fund for debt services based on the three outstanding issues that we have currently.
I support those changes. It's great that are --
This tax rate resolution also includes the voted millage associated with the various levies for the operation of DD Board, their achievement center operation, the drug enforcement levy, or anti-drug levy, county home operational levy, and the health, human, and social service levy. And I've attached in the last, second to last page, the Schedule B, which shows the estimated total valuation for the county for next year and the associated collection amounts for the various levies and for the 2.5 mil inside. So it would be my hope, we've got to get the budget commission to take action on this so that they may, along with the other taxing subdivisions, it may be submitted by the auditor's office to Columbus for purposes of review and approval of the tax rate and for billing purposes, property tax billing for next year. So they are meeting this Friday and are scheduled to meet one more time in December. I believe it's the 15th. So we'll need to take action on this and get it to them shortly.
I'm in agreement with Colleen about the shift, as well as the proposal to shift the, reduce the general bond retirement to .2. I'm glad we're able to, just shows we're managing our debt adequately, even with the brand-new courthouse and all the other things going on. This is obviously good news.
Yep.
Be able to devote less and less of our resources to paying interest.
Great.
But the question that brings forward is the achievement center. And given in the past that the budget commission had before them regarding the carryover, and there was a performance audit performed by the state auditor's office regarding the significant amount of cash that they're sitting on, not only in terms of their operations, but also for their capital, their building and so forth, and that they have a significant amount of revenue that they basically do not use for those purposes, and the requirement of taking a look at that and seeing if millage ought to be rolled back potentially. I know in the past, the budget commission had a proposal to do that. They had evaluated it, and they were then, I guess, when I'm with them, they then tabled that pending the performance audit, but that's now been done. So do you know whether they're going to be resuming an evaluation of that, or where are we at in terms of the amount of cash sitting there for the achievement center?
Firstly, I'm not aware of any ongoing discussion or planned discussion.
And if it's not on their agenda for this Friday, there's only one more month in the year.
Yeah. Well, they tabled it, and so at any point in time --
Last year?
Yeah, last year, when they tabled it pending. And of course, now you have a new auditor, of course, but I guess, a board can take, they didn't define when they would return it. So potentially, they could, I guess, revisit that. But for us, since we're the taxing authority, we indeed have to pass this resolution and put that on there. Do you have an idea of how much in terms of revenue that they have received or going to receive that will be not needed for operating, projected operating expenses?
What I do have is their current cash position.
Okay, that'd be great.
If you want to take a quick look, it's the third highlighted line is their operating fund. They also have a capital fund, which is the first highlighted line. So those are the cash balances in those respective funds for the period ending 10/31/23.
And the audit was done, was that year-end '22? Was that what the audit period was?
The performance audit?
Yeah.
That was a special performance audit.
What was the, what was the, the numbers that they would have reviewed would have been obviously slightly different than this, but would they have been significantly different?
This carryover is actually lower than --
Okay, that's what I was curious.
They started to spend it down.
Yeah.
For sure, but it's still --
The carryover, cash balance in the achievement center or the DD Board's operating fund at the end of '22 was $28,253,000.
So it's gone up a little bit, then?
It's gone up, but bear in mind, that includes the second half, property tax distribution.
Got it.
There'll be expenses obviously made against that fund balance in months of November and December, which will draw down on that number.
If it's not on their agenda for this Friday or December, then there's --
Well, that's what I was asking, if they had had any further discussions about it based on the performance audit that was included.
I thought the performance audit findings, too, were that our DD Board was on par with similarly situated operations in terms of --
Like smack in the middle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On par, I guess, yeah, meaning in the middle.
Yeah.
Not at the upper reaches, which, you know, maybe would necessitate or suggest some kind of a solution like a rollback. So that, to me, I thought maybe they wouldn't reconsider that discussion, but if that's on the agenda, I guess it's a different story.
I, I'm not sure it'll get done before the end of the year.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
So it may be something, if they have a discussion on it in one of the budget hearings next year, then we revisit it at the end of next year, but we have to pass the --
Oh, no, I, no.
-- this resolution, so.
I agree that we do, but the question, like I said, was pending, based upon that, having re-reviewed it.
Well, John, maybe you can find out if they're going to put it on the agenda.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I would like to, this is merely a draft at this point.
Sure.
I think it also is reflective of the final document that I'll be presenting to you.
Okay.
Subsequently, I would hope to put that on the agenda for next Tuesday if that's satisfactory, and then get that up to the auditor's office for submission to the budget commission for its approval.
Makes sense.
All right. And I believe that's all I had today.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Andy, did you have something else?
Executive.
Executive. Okay. And we have an executive session.
We do.
Did you have anything else, sir?
No, do not.
Did you have anything else?
I do not.
Okay.
I do need to chat with Sarah.
We should go into executive session.
I would move that we go into executive session to discuss an imminent court action. Second.
Roll. Hamblin?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweating?